All right, we're ready to start. Take attendance. Counselor Brown, absent, he's running late.
Counselor Judith Garcia, absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia, absent. Counselor Lopez?
Yeah.
Counselor Robinson?
Yeah.
Counselor Recupero?
Yeah.
Counselor Vido?
Present.
Counselor De Jesus?
Present.
Counselor Hubbleburg?
Here.
Counselor Vega, absent. Counselor Taylor?
I'm here.
Seven present. Do you have a quorum?
We do have a quorum. Judith Garcia is at the State House. They have a budget handout there, so she won't be attending tonight. And Counselor Brown is running late. And the call of the meeting is?
Please be informed that the Chelsea City Council President Leo Robinson has called for a joint conference with the School Committee in accordance with Section 5-1 of the City Charter to review the annual budget. Following subject matters will be discussed, review of the annual School Department budget.
Okay, the Chair recognizes Counsel Hubbleburg.
I need to exit as I have a conflict of interest. My wife serves the School Department. And so, according to our city solicitor, I need to recuse myself from this one.
All right, you can leave a clip for the record.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We do, we still, we're able to proceed.
We have a quorum?
We have a quorum. And actually, in essence of time, we will turn it over to the School Department.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of City Council and those viewing from home.
Mark.
Dr. Abada?
For the record, we are live. We are live.
Thank you. Dr. Abada, our superintendent, has had an unexpected emergency and will not be able to join us. My name's Adam Delady, the Deputy Superintendent, and you're stuck with me. I'm here with Monica Lamboy, our Executive Director of Administration and Finance, and we are proud to be presenting our proposed budget for Chelsea Public Schools for fiscal year 2024. Our theme for this proposed budget is strengthen and support. Our topics this evening will include: funding for public education in Massachusetts, Chelsea Public Schools revenue and expenditure for the current year FY '23, our revenue forecast for FY '24, our expenditure forecast for FY '24, our proposed budget plan, and next steps. As many of you know, our vision for Chelsea Public Schools is that we are a gateway school system that welcomes and educates all students and families. Our theory of action is that if we improve the quality of teaching and learning at every school, provide innovative and enriching programming for all, recruit, support, and retain diverse teachers and leaders, engage families as our partners in our core work, and ensure efficient and effective operational systems, then we will deliver the high-quality education to all students that our Chelsea students deserve, and will improve outcomes and access across the system for all students, and every student will graduate from high school on a path to college and career success. Our budget is grounded in our five-year strategic plan, which is driven by the shared values of relationships, equity, instruction, safety, support, respect, and integrity. The plan's priorities include rigorous and culturally relevant instruction, recruiting, supporting, and retaining diverse and high-quality teachers and leaders, engaging parents and community, efficient and effective systems and operations, and state-of-the-art technology, and increased access to engaging and enriching opportunities for all students. Our budget development process included three community conversations on February 13th, 16th, and 27th, respectively. We used our CPS strategic plan that I previously referenced, and we also have a process for our schools and departments to make formal requests for budget pieces. And now, I will turn it over to Ms. Lamboy.
Good evening, President Robinson and members of the City Council. I'm Monica Lamboy, Executive Director of Administration and Finance. I'd like to first start and provide some of the context of how public funding is allocated in Massachusetts. It's a unique process. So the first thing that the state does every year is figure out the foundation budget, which is what is the cost to educate every child who lives in Chelsea regardless of where they attend school? That is called the foundation budget. They then look at municipal revenues, municipal resources, and determine what percentage of that total can the local municipality provide toward public education? That becomes the required local contribution. The difference between those two figures is the Chapter 70 funding, which is the state's contribution toward education at the local level. From that whole, we deduct the monies for charter schools, for regional vocational schools, and other schools that school choice where Chelsea children may choose to attend. The difference is what is for Chelsea Public Schools, and that's a number that we will see as we go through the presentation. Another very important number is what's called the Required Net School Spending, NSS. So it's not enough to budget the amount for education. We actually have to prove each year that we spend the money for educational purposes. If we ever fall below the Required Net School Spending, there is ramifications for future-year budgets, fines, et cetera. So we pay very close attention to the Required Net School Spending. This graphic is just a representation of what I just said. If you imagine this whole is the cost to educate all children who live in Chelsea. The state share is shown here. For us in particular, it's a very large number. This is not the actual figure. And then there's the local share of the pie, what the locals contribute. From that amount, the charter school tuition and the regional is deducted. This wedge is effectively taken with the students to the educational institution that they go to. Then within the local share, there is the amount that is required to meet the net school spending. There is, there are also items that are not net school spending eligible. For us, one example is our yellow bus service, which is not net school spending. And then there's typically an additional percentage that the municipality voluntarily gives towards education. So that's the general context for funding. Looking at this year to give some idea of how we're spending and what the revenues are this year. This pie shows us for 2023, the Chapter 70 in red, the city share in green, grants, funding, and revolving funds. This pie includes the COVID grant funding, that's one-time funding. So this is not a normal pie. You'll see the grant share is very large. If I show you the same information minus the COVID-19 monies, you'll see a big shift. The amount of state funding, Chapter 70, becomes a much larger percentage of the total budget, and our grant becomes a smaller percentage. We typically are between 6% and 8% grant-funded, so this just sort of shows that change. And we will be coming to the end, not too far in the future, of our COVID-19 monies. Next, I'm going to show you the general fund history from 2017 to current year 2023. From 2021, 2022, and 2023, we have begun to see the monies set aside as part of the Student Opportunity Act. These are funds that Chelsea, other communities around the state, really worked hard to have the legislature fund for us. It more accurately represents low-income students, the needs, and ELL learners. With this trend line, you can really see how the last three years have been on a different trend in years prior. Now, if we add the one-time money, the COVID money, this graphic shows in blue the one-year, the multi-year COVID funding that has been used over the past few years to help accelerate learning and help our kids reintroduce to the classroom. Now, how have we been using the money? Education is a very people operation, so the vast, vast majority of money, nearly 75%, is in our staff, in our teachers, our custodians, our crossing guards. Those are our people. In addition to that, we have significant funding for special ed tuition for students that are going to out-of-district schools, transportation, facilities, information technology, and supplies, et cetera. Accomplishments over the past couple of years have been significant now that we are back in school. We have added 165 positions between fiscal '22 and '23. 68 of those are on the one-time COVID money called ESER, ESER II or ESER III, 94 on the general fund. We have implemented new reading curriculum at our elementary level. We have new math curriculum at our middle school level, and additional curriculum selection efforts are in process. It's an opportunity using these one-time monies to get state-of-the-art curriculum the best that there is on the market. We have added after-school offerings requested by parents of almost all grades, including expanded our four-kids-only at the elementary. We're adding a middle school program with them. We are offering tutoring, one-on-one tutoring, virtual for students in the middle and the high school. We have had very successful summer school programs last year, moving to this year. And we've done a lot of physical improvements with our buildings. Turning to the future year, fiscal 2024, some of the factors influencing the revenues and expenditures are: We have had an increase in enrollment between '21 and '22. We did see a decrease, as many communities did, during the pandemic years and the year right after. But with each student, we get revenue from the state. We have Year Three of the Student Opportunity Act. We have the ESER III funds, which will carry us through fiscal '24, and they'll end in September that year. On the other hand, on the expenditure side, we have been seeing changes in student demographics, and I'll show you that in detail in a little bit. We always have step and cost of living increases, health insurance. I always say, to do the exact same thing you're doing now, a year later costs more because of those built-in cost increases. Transportation costs have been rising for out-of-district students, utilities, insurance, and other fixed costs, which we've all been experiencing in our household budgets. And what we're calling a potential ESER cliff for fiscal '25, where our one-time monies will be fully utilized, yet we have to figure out how to accommodate for that going forward. And in terms of enrollment, if you look at this chart from 2007 to 2022, you can see really dramatic increase in student enrollment between 2011, 2013, 2014. Then we leveled out. You'll see a little bit of up and down, a little prior to the pandemic, but also during the pandemic. But we are on an upturn. We have met, we have returned back to our pre-pandemic student enrollment. Looking at student demographics, this table, this graphic, I think, is very telling. It shows how student needs have been changing over time. The lowest row in green is our special ed education population. We can see that that is on a slow increase as more students are identified with needs. Our English language learner population has also been increasing, but at a faster rate. We are definitely seeing significant numbers of newcomers to Chelsea who have language needs to learn English. The yellow line at the top is the low-income percentage. And where you can see in 2018, 2019, it's actually dipped, we don't believe that the share of low-income students has changed that dramatically. We think that the state has actually listened to Chelsea and said, you have been undercounting our low-income students for a number of years. In 2021, they had changed the formula, the way that they identified students, and as a result, we are seeing what we believe to be a more accurate representation. And with that representation comes the funding for those low-income students. This next slide is a more detailed look at enrollment trends by grade band and the forecast for next year. Our forecast process is a three-year forecast, so it's not, it's a slight downturn from where we are today because we're also including the pandemic year in the forecast. But it's mostly at the same level. Oh, and actually, we are at 6,280 students right now, actually, last week. Some of the highlights of enrollment change. We have the highest high school enrollment since 2003. And if you think about it, the high school opened in 1996. The addition opened in 2003, '04. So we have more students now than even when the blue side opened. We have first to fourth grades that were larger than 2022, but still smaller than pre-pandemic, so we're watching that trend. We have the smallest middle school enrollment since 2017, but it was still larger than where we thought we would be a year ago today when we were projecting middle school. And we have a large cohort of students that are currently in the ninth grade, a really large cohort in the ninth grade. They're followed behind with a very large eighth grade. So as I just said, that the high school was at the largest it had been since we've been tracking. We may be even larger next year with that group rising. I'm happy to answer any questions as time goes by. All of these factors in terms of enrollment, student needs flows into the revenue forecast, the revenue that the state calculates for us. So this is a multi-part table. I'll try to walk through slowly. So, as I said at the beginning, the first thing the state does is determine the foundation budget for all children who live in Chelsea. That's broken down into Chapter 70 and the city's required amount of spending. You can see that here, you can see '23, which we're in, '24 for the future, and the difference. Then, in terms of charter school, school choice, the state does provide us with some additional revenue for charter school tuition, but it is always woefully lower than the actual cost of students that are going to the charter schools. So we can see $4,089,000 is the new revenue for charter school students, but the actual cost is over $19 million. So it does help, but it's a net reduction in the amount of funding available. To these numbers, we add the city funding for things that are not net school spending. That includes our yellow buses, our intergenerational literacy program, and some other items that the School Committee has been funding for years, our share above the minimum, and indirect cost recovery, which are monies that come from grants. So overall, we're looking at a budget increase of just shy of $14 million between '23 and '24. A little bit on the one-time monies, the ESER II and ESER III. At present, the end date for all spending is September 30, 2024, so that will get us through all of next fiscal year and the summer. The uses that have been approved so far are 68 positions, including the new Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy, high-quality instructional materials, after-school and summer school programming, mental health services for students, and significant investments in our HVAC systems. Our buildings are now 26, 27 years old, and major systems start to fail at that point. So we are using the one-time money to replace the HVAC at the Early Learning Center, the Mary C. Burke, and to make a big share toward the high school HVAC replacement. That's all already budgeted for. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Delady.
Thank you. So as a reminder, our budget priorities are to strengthen and expand for equity. And this includes particularly our special education students, our students learning English, social-emotional supports, curriculum development and support. We're really trying to accelerate literacy and math learning, and we're trying to reduce teacher-to-student ratio, as well as teacher recruitment and retention. And with that, I'll turn it right back over to Ms. Lamboy.
Excellent. Okay. So the first thing that we do before contemplating any new additions is to look at our baseline expenditures. In this case, our cost of living and step increases are estimated about $4.3 million. Our health insurance and our pension contributions at $3.2 million. Our special ed tuition, I'm happy to report, we are not anticipating an increase in that area. That is a cost driver for a lot of communities. But we were able to, during 2020, prepay $1 million of tuition, which we've actually accelerated to 1.5. So we feel that's a really phenomenal cushion, that should we have an increase in out-of-district, we have that cushion available to us. So we do not proposing any kind of increase into special ed tuition right now. Transportation, on the other hand, has been a significant driver this year, no pun intended, and utilities, liability insurance, et cetera. So overall, that's $8.8 million of the number I had said previously. In terms of new spending and new ideas by grade band, for our Early Learning Center, the key initiatives for 2024 are to strengthen special education supports. To do so, to do so, we will be opening an additional classroom for social communication or autism program. And a classroom that had been a half-year that would open in January is actually opening at the beginning of the school year. So we are seeing an increase in students at the lowest grades with special education autism needs. We're proposing a teacher-coach for special ed inclusion. That coach works with other teachers to help move our students into general education settings or support them within general education settings. And paraprofessionals for social communication autism. In addition, we're starting the process to move some of the positions off of ESER onto the general fund. This includes an educational team leader and a social worker, moving off of the grant onto the general fund. And we will be reducing one kindergarten teacher and paraprofessional because those rooms will be used for autism. At our elementary schools combined, our initiatives are to strengthen special education and ELL supports and enhance planning time, which is time when teachers at the same grade band can work together to support students. Here, we are proposing four teachers for foundational English language learners in the first grade. These are students who are very new to English and who need a lot of support. A transitional teacher who supports the students who have a higher level of English. Four technology teachers to teach a class like we teach art, like we teach PE, but this will be focused on technology. We haven't been able to do this, I think, in many years in Chelsea. Paraprofessionals, two counselors. We added two counselors this year, and they are split two schools each. With this addition, each elementary school will have its own counselor who works with the social worker and the leadership team to support student needs. And two principal clerks for special education, so that each of the elementaries will have its own special ed clerk. And we'll be moving from ESER to the general fund, a paraprofessional for sub-separate students in the learning center. And we'll be eliminating one vacant library position. At the middle schools, key initiatives include strengthen special education and ELL supports. Here, we're proposing to add five special education teachers for inclusion. These are co-teachers that assist the main classroom teacher and support students who have special needs within the classroom. We will be opening an autism social communication class at Clark Avenue Middle School. We're proposing two English language learner teachers for students who have had limited or broken education in their prior settings, prior country. Three paraprofessionals and a principal clerk for the principal's office at Clark Avenue Middle School. Proposing to transfer off of the grant, three counselors, and one social worker. At Chelsea High School, key initiatives include strengthen special education and ELL supports and increase class offerings. I'm really happy to announce we're adding four classroom teachers at the high school. The first year I started, we cut 10 teachers at the high school, so it is great to be able to add to the faculty there, especially with the enrollment that we are seeing. This includes English Language Arts, Math, History and Social Studies, and our first world language Portuguese offering, language offering. We will be opening an additional social communication class with a teacher and a paraprofessional, an ELL teacher for students with interrupted learning, an assistant principal of operations, and a parent liaison who will help with the communication between the school and the parents with such a large student body. Transferring from the grant to the general fund, a social worker, a social communication teacher, and two paraprofessionals for special education. Our instruction and assessment team, who really drive the curriculum, key initiatives are to continue to accelerate learning in literacy and math and culturally responsive and high-quality curriculum. Here, we're proposing to add a coordinator for visual and performing arts. That would be our art, our music, our band. And a coordinator for early college and high school graduation. We're also proposing a shared position half for LaVita Scholars, which is a savings program for families toward college, and an avid organizer, which is a training program for teachers. We will be reducing one director and one coordinator, so this is, and one position at the Parent Information Center. So this is all net neutral on this page. I'm close to the end. In special education, key initiatives are strengthen special education supports. We're proposing one coordinator for related services. That refers to our speech-language pathologists, our OTPT. We have about 16, and this would actually be a first-time supervisor for that team. Transfer from the grant to the general fund, the assistant director of special ed, and three speech-language pathologists. For health, in our health department, continue to strengthen student health services, converting one nurse case manager who works with medically fragile children and their families from a Department of Public Health grant to the general fund, and transfer three nurses aides from ESER to the general fund to make those positions permanent. Other programs, continued expansion of after-school and summer school. We're expanding the four-kids-only at the elementary level. We are adding funding for student workers. Our high school students are hungry to have jobs, and we will be offering some funding for student workers. In the grant, we will be adding fifth to sixth four-kids-only and tutoring for struggling students. Other district-wide initiatives, teacher recruitment and retention, and ongoing operations. Within our HR department, we have started the teacher-to-para, para-to-teacher pipeline. We are gonna, now it's really very robust. We have a lot of participation. Proposing a HR specialist to manage that program and a new HR specialist for new teachers to help support our new teachers so that they stay with Chelsea and the investments we make in year one transfer into year two and hopefully a full-time permanent career. Coordinator for Equity and Excellence, transfer the PIC director to the general fund, and one building maintenance man at the Early Learning Center. Lots of little kids and lots of furniture to clean, so we need another set of hands over there. From the general fund, from ESER to the general fund, a communication specialist, and three counselors and social workers, which you've already seen. Okay, summary. This table shows by sort of grade band the additions, and then the offsetting reductions, and then the movement from the grant onto the general fund. You can see about 20 positions in this budget are recommended to effectively become permanent by moving them to the general fund. That leaves us with approximately another 40 positions that are still on ESER III. That will be a 2025 challenge for us. And you can see we added about 40 positions new this year, so it's basically gonna probably take up a large share of the funding for next year. This is just another way to look at the change by instructional staff, student support, paraprofessionals, administrative staff. Clearly, the majority, vast majority, in the administrative, instructional, and student support. Then Dr. Abada asked me to show the investment by type of position. So special education, 70 positions, English language learners, 32. This is for three years. Equity, 22, general ed, and all of the positions over the last three years. So in summary, So in summary, we believe we have hit all of the goals that were articulated earlier, including special education, ELL, acceleration of literacy and math, teacher recruitment, tension, et cetera. With that, we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, I will start on my left with Nora Lee, so if you have any questions.
Yes, thank you so much for this presentation. I really appreciate all the work that you guys do and for putting this together for us. My, my thoughts and my questions are regarding the classroom size and your goal for reducing the teacher to student ratio. Can you break that down for me a little more and how that will look like in terms of numbers?
Sure. One of our greatest constraints right now is space. We are, every classroom is full. We have converted other spaces into classrooms. We have converted storage closets into offices. We are really maximized on space. So where other districts might talk about class size reduction because they may have an extra room so they can split a class in half, we don't have the ability to do that. So what we do is offer additional adults in the classroom so that they can break them out into small groups within the classroom. So in a classroom, let's say at the elementary, you'll have the classroom teacher. You may also have an inclusion teacher who's pushing in to help the students who have IEPs. You may also see an ELL teacher also pushing in to work with the students that have are learning English, plus a paraprofessional, et cetera. So we're able to quote reduce class size by having additional adults in the classroom.
And so how many students exactly would we see if we were to walk into a classroom?
It varies. I would say at the elementary, we've got about 22 to 24 per classroom right now. The middles in the low twenties, the high school is larger, partially to make sure kids can get all the credits that they need. They can go up to 25, 28. But we have a contractual maximum with the teachers union that we can't exceed.
Thank you. My other question is around the social emotional support services. What does that look like in terms of middle school in particular? I know that there have been a lot of parent concerns around fights and what happens after school. But I'm wondering then, like, does that also translate into the school during the day? Do you, are you seeing these behaviors and how are you guys dealing with the social emotional support services to tackle on that stuff?
I'll take a, start of that and Adam can add. From a, from a position perspective, the one-time Esser money, Dr. Abeta really put a large share into additional counselors and additional social workers focused on the middle school, actually at all grade levels. So we have more staff now to support our kids than we did. And it's needed, right? They're, they're coming back with heavy emotional loads that they're grappling with. This budget makes those, all of the social workers permanent and all of the counselors permanent. I think really showing her investment in making sure we're addressing the social emotional. But I will turn it over to you.
Yeah, in terms of what it looks like, so in order to provide those services, you need the people first and foremost. But you also need structures in the buildings to, to be able to provide that support. So in terms of like when we have kids doing things that we prefer them not to be doing, like fights after school, we do try to take a restorative approach. So in order to do that, we need people trained in that field. So what'll happen is if we, if we have a fight after school that we find out about, and we've had a few unfortunately, usually the principals will catch wind. They'll take the kids in in the morning and then find out what happened. Turn it over to the support people so that they can go into various approaches to dealing with this. Ultimately, we always try to get to the point where we can restore the damage that we've, that has been done by doing mediation, some restorative circles. Sometimes it's having the kid be able to just have someone to talk to off to the side. And then we also, we have some kids who have educational plans that require these services as well. So if it's written into their individualized education plan or IEP, it might say that they see the social worker once a week for 30 minutes. And that's a little bit more of a formalized process. So we have a wide spectrum of services and how we use those people. Does that answer?
Yes, thank you so much.
Cal Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, thank you. Apologize for being late. I just got a lot of questions, but I'll just put one or two together. One question is following up on what my councilor stated. What have you done and what have you are, in your action plan will reflect some of the 14 million dollars to focus on some of the mental illness that we see in the schools now? And the other part of that question is, in that 14 million dollars, which I think I came in here, said is your request for this year's budget, correct?
Yes, just under 14 million.
So just under 14 million. And how much is that is focusing on your strategy plan, your action plan, what you told us you would like to do?
So I heard two questions. First, I would say that all of the positions that we're proposing do reflect the strategic action plan. In terms of supports for equity for students with special needs and students with English language learning needs, we are in that continuing to expand after school offerings, more seats and more offerings themselves. That's another way to help reduce the fights as well if we have the kids occupied in the afternoon. So I do feel like I would be hard pressed to find something that wasn't like right on the plan. And that's been Dr. Abeta's focus, is to implement the strategic plan. Then the second question was, apologies, related to social emotional. So in addition to the staffing, which we talked about, the counselors and the social workers, we also have telehealth offerings where students can be assigned to work with a counselor remotely. It's been a big hit. We have some ARPA money that the city has granted us that will be for additional telehealth and just trying to wrap these kids around with adults that care about them.
Just, Mr. President, if you can, if you can, if you can give something in writing, just what you have now and what you're proposing in that, those two questions that I just asked would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Todd Taylor.
So I just had a question because you kind of had to go quickly over a lot of information here. And we only have like 10 minutes left, so.
We want to make sure we get to Council Recuperall, okay? We want to make sure we get to Council Recuperall.
So, so my question has to do with your statement that somehow we're getting the more funding from the state on the low income people. Can you just please explain that? Because I know that, you know, you're talking about us being undercounted. But can you just, can you just explain how that happens and is that the part of the chapter 70?
Certainly. The Student Opportunity Act legislation changed the state's formula to acknowledge that students who have are low income and who are English language learners and who have special needs have additional needs than other students that may just be in general education. That was adopted by the legislature with advocacy for Chelsea. We're now seeing really the fruit of that where for each student that is identified in these categories, there is a little supplement that is built into the budget that the state gives us.
So what does that have to do with undercounting?
In years prior, there was a supplement for low income. However, the way that the state did the matching was exclusively on the mass health database. And a number of our families may have mass health for one to two years and then fall off. And so we also advocated on that to say, can you not look at other measures to identify low income? And they have implemented that.
Okay, I, I, I understand, I understand what you're saying. It's kind of, they're trying to make up in an area where they, they think that they can do it, but it really doesn't have much to do with undercounting itself. Do you understand what I'm saying? I mean, we, we, we get shortchanged by the state because we have more people that are actually counted in, in, in Chelsea. So this was a way for them to, to give us extra money to try to make up for that because there's no way to be precise about that. Is that correct?
I, I'm not sure that. There are other communities that have large low income populations and they have also gotten that proportionate share based on the improved, I would say improved counting now than it was in the past.
One more quick question. There's, you said that we have 83 new students this year? Okay. And, and how has that gone in the past? I see, I see here on the demographics trend that we have basically doubled in the last 10 years on the number of ELL people. So, so how does that, I mean, just looking at the graph here, that, those numbers don't really jive to me.
Well, I do know, it was before my time in speaking to some of the staff, that 2014, 2015, there was a huge in migration, a lot of unaccompanied minors. And that has sort of lifted the floor, I think of where Chelsea is at. And now we're sort of at this different level that is sustaining itself in terms of newcomers.
Yeah, so, well, maybe this graph is a little bit off, but it just didn't, okay, so. I mean, I understand that there was, but this graph looks like it's steadily going up.
It is steadily going up.
And so, and so I just, with only 83 new students, I, how do we, how do we get, how do we get all these new ELL people when there's only 83 new students?
In terms of new students.
Do you understand my question? I mean, I.
In terms of new students, we have students coming in and out every week, right? So it's, we have 83.
So it's 83 net?
Net, over the previous spot in time last year.
I, I understand. Okay.
Can we get to Council Recuperall's questions?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Talking to the mic?
Huh? Everybody else talks to the mic too, I guess. Okay. Good evening. I have a couple of questions. I would like to begin by saying I am a supporter of your school system. I'm a supporter of everything you do for the children, but I'm also a supporter of the people that live in our city. How about your budget is more than our city budget? That has to be, I know chapter 70 gives you money. We have, from what I see here, the attendance of the children has gone down. It hasn't increased. The school, you have it here in your, in this page here, it's less. The attend, you know, it's less than it was. So the only question I have is a simple question. There's nothing, what happens when all the funding runs out? What happens when the money that is not there anymore? What would you do?
A cou- a couple of points. So one, the snapshot that the state uses to determine enrollment is always October 1st or the closest school day, October 1st. Chelsea historically has enrollment increases all the way through to the end of the year, which is why today we are more than 120 students higher than the October figure. Yet that's what they do for the money, so that's the number that we use. But we are actually on an upturn after the kind of little toggle during the pandemic. We are definitely seeing an increase. Whether it's going to continue as an increase or level off is yet to be certain. But at least at the moment, we are not at risk of having a significant decrease in students. So that gives us, you know, a sense that we'll have a level, level playing field or a level revenue stream going forward with maybe some minor adjustments. But it, it appears to be pretty level now at the 6,200 plus numbers of students.
There's another thing here I don't understand. There's one here, social, no, that's not the one. I'll tell you in one second. It's got to do.
Council, are you looking for that? Demoli has a question.
Right here, funding for, this is the last question, funding for student workers. What is that?
Student workers? Those are high school students that are working in after school programming, in the REACH program, different activities, are working with some of our elementary kids after school. So it's, it's a way for them to get job training. It's a way for them to get a little bit of money. We have historically gotten grant funds for that, but that seems to have largely dried up. So we're putting a little bit of general fund into that. It's not a significant amount.
So we're paying them?
Those that successfully compete for the jobs, they can be hired, they have to come to work and do all the tasks that they've been assigned.
No more question.
Council Demoli.
I recognize that this might have to end through email at some point. I guess, first of all, I just want to acknowledge District 4 School Committee person, Clarie Angeles-Covas, for being the only school committee member present. I have a question about, it sounds like there's a lot of positions that were added. And I'm all for it. We need it. We've been underfunded for a long time. But I do have a similar concern about what happens when that emergency money runs out. And I'm just wondering if it is expected from your, from your perspective that the SOA will actually fund all of these new positions that you're putting in? Or if there will be a point after September 30, 2024 where you're coming back to the city council and saying, we need an additional big, huge lump of change that we may not have?
So, thank you. That's a really fundamental question that we have been talking with Dr. Abeta about, which is how do we avoid this cliff, right? We've added reading specialists and math specialists and other, you know, important positions and we don't necessarily want to lose all of them. So this year expenditure recommendations are taking into account that next year we are, we are going to have an additional probably 40 positions that we're going to have to figure, did we get the value that we had hoped for when we first funded the position? And if we, if we are, then those will be high, high priority, the highest priority perhaps. Because in order to stay where we are today, those positions need to be continued. But, but we have done quite a bit of analysis to try to feel comfortable that we are in a good spot for next year.
Okay. And the other question I had is, was related to the Virtual Learning Academy. I was working with a couple of the councils with some middle schoolers over at the Brown School. And some of the girls that I was working with, I realized, that I was meeting with and getting to know, I realized that they'd have like these small behavioral issues and they were automatically transported over to the Virtual Learning Academy. And I'm curious, we know that we have a huge mental health crisis going on in this community. We know that our young people have suffered significantly. I'm very concerned about us, them falling through the cracks because we know that kids are not learning the same through virtual. As much as we want to, we know, we want to try to meet their needs, they're not really learning to the same extent that they would in the classroom. So I'm a little concerned about those kids and I would like some data around that. And I recognize you may not have that there and it may be an email, but if you can at least enlighten me and just kind of.
So first off, I'll say I spoke to a student this morning at the Virtual Academy and she is actually completing her high school credits simultaneously with completing early college credits. And by the end of this semester, she's in her junior year, she will have completed her full freshman credits in college by the end of this year. So we're super excited about that.
We're not going to generalize. I understand. I know. I'm not saying everyone.
I, I know. I'm answering your question though. As far as students automatically being enrolled in the Virtual Academy, that does not happen. That parents have to be on board with that before. We don't force anyone into virtual schooling. So it's an option for people, but it's not required.
I understand that, but I think sometimes parents feel like their hands are tied. And so it, when it becomes too much of a handful in the regular school setting, because I'm telling you, I'm working with a group of young girls within your schools. And when I go, there's at least five of them that are no longer in the school because they're in the virtual program. So I just, I just want to make sure that, look, things happen. And sometimes I was one of those kids that had to try all those alternative schools. I get it. I just want to make sure that they're not falling through the crack. That with all these mental health counselors and all the investments we're making in the school that we're not forgetting, that we're not allowing those kids to fall through the, I was one of the kids that fell through the cracks.
I, I would say I'm confident that we're not letting them fall through the cracks. We actually have the smallest teacher to student ratio in our whole district at the Virtual Academy. It's about 10 students per class and they have plenty of opportunities to come in in person. The principal is very hands-on. I recognized at the time. So I would say we're really proud of what's going on there. I can talk to you further.
Yeah, please.
I'd actually like to thank you for the presentation. If anybody has any other questions, they can go over to the school department and ask. We, when, cable needs a couple of minutes to switch over so we can start our regular meeting. So, two minutes.